Mr. Kern, you have to know how to turn the microphone on.
These are not the latest technology.
Okay, that's true.
These are ancient.
That's the problem.
So, the majority of our schools have been upgraded with various cohorts so that they're, you know, they can utilize the full bandwidth that we have. Last portion that we're working on is cohort eight, which has been escalated to try and get done before the end of the school year. That will eliminate that, you know, we have a full 100 gig to the Internet through the district, so that should not be a problem anymore.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I might also recall we did change providers after we'd had a very significant number of issues one year during testing season not too long ago, and so we actually changed providers as well.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Pardon me. I have another question about the CARES Act funding. I think it was Member Cobert who mentioned this one about delaying the start of school for students to begin, but offering teachers not in advance as much as paying them for the training using the CARES Act money. So, there is plenty of training that we could do for our teachers and for parents and for students to make sure that we have a solid start when we do go back to school. And I think those are, we have a lot of serious protocols in addition to the technological training. We're revamping how we do school, and I think that that investment in time by all of our employees and in paying our employees for learning all of these is worthy, worthwhile of that commitment. So, I think even though Mr. Paul Marini said that he was a buzzkill when it comes to the CARES Act funding, I think there is a way if we are paying our employees for that additional training and all of the work that they'll be doing.
So, Member Castro Denil, if I could, because I know that the next segment is going to cover the CARES Act and financial implications, and I know we're all interested in that question. Can we let Mr. Kelly respond to that question when he's going through his presentation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
I didn't really need a response, I was just kind of making a statement.
Oh, I think we all want to, yeah, but I think we're all interested in that, so let's cover that at one time.
That's fine, and that's my last statement.
Okay, great, and it's an important issue, I just want to give it its due. I have just a couple of, just two really quick questions, because the rest of the board members have done a great job of asking the questions. The shields, so I was glad to see we're looking at the shields for our K through two. Is it an option to have shields? It seems to me, I haven't used one, but it seems like that would be an easier tool to keep on our children's face and probably an easier thing to function with. Could that be an option for all of elementary school? And if you don't have any answer now, just for next week, if you can let us know.
Yeah, it is certainly an option. There are some pros and cons to it because, as Dr. Pino mentioned, it doesn't stop, as a face mask would capture everything, it doesn't stop it, but it's certainly a possibility. We have, we'll have some numbers for you on the difference in the cost.
And then the one other, the one other thing that I think I was confused about with the launch ed model, and I actually am still confused. Some of the board members' questions, I thought, helped clear it up for me, but I was envisioning that this option was going to help us bridge the gap between the teachers who are not in a safe place to come back to school for medical, personal, or family reasons, that they would be able to come in and work in a classroom, or possibly even at home, but in a classroom environment where they're not, the kids are not there, all the kids are there virtually. So, I was thinking we were marrying up the kids that wanted to do the launch ed and the teachers who needed to be isolated from the students, and that cohort, I guess you would call it, was self-isolated. Yes, the teacher would be coming on the campus, but much less contact if all they're doing is walking in with a face mask, going to their classroom, and leaving. They could potentially even get there early, leave later if they didn't want to interface. So, I thought it was a great way of marrying up those two populations. And what I'm hearing is that might be the case, but it might be that the classroom is blended with kids in classroom and kids in launch ed. So, could it be either or, is it a matter of trying to match those numbers up? Help me out, Dr. Jacobs.
You already hit it, hit the nail on the head. So, the best-case scenario, we believe, is that the teacher is in the classroom and all of her students are off-campus. Just can't guarantee that the numbers are going to match that exactly, so there may be some instances where we can't have exactly that number, and we can't afford to have a class at home that's only 11 or so, and then the other teacher on campus has to have larger numbers. So, we may have to mix and match. Our preference is that the teacher has her entire class at home, that's what we're aiming for. We'll know when we see what the numbers look like.
Okay, thank you. That helps me tremendously because I, the great value of being able to keep a larger number of our teachers safe rather than them all having to look at Florida Virtual School, I think is a huge advantage, but I do understand that until we know those numbers, until we get those first semester commitments, we really can't know exactly how that's going to work out.
Correct.
Those my only, my only last two questions is because everybody did a phenomenal job. Let me go to Member Gould, Vice Chair Gould. Vice Chair Gould, are you with us?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We now can, yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. I would like to circle back to the discussion on maybe delaying the start of school and trying to find compensation for our employees since there would be a disruption in their regular start dates. Could they qualify for the unemployment for those weeks? Or could we partner with the county, because I know in the CARES Act money, they got public, public employees were included in that, and maybe offset some of that salary differential for that period of time? Not so much out of our education and asking for a waiver, but going a little bit more the traditional CARES Act route utilizing some of those unemployment. I know you might not be able to answer that tonight, but I would like to know unless you've already investigated that.
We'll look into it.
Okay, and then, having been part of the families in middle school when we had kind of the houses or the teams, that worked beautifully for my oldest son, and there's a lot of benefits to it as well. So, I think families would find the cohort approach really something kind of special and unique for this time period, and might even be a positive outcome for what we're having to go through right now. So, and thank you, everybody else, for covering all of my thoughts and questions.
Thank you. Back to you, Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few follow-up questions, and some of them we might not be able to answer, but the first one I want to ask, I thought someone else might get to it, but if we have a teacher that is on campus and kids in her classroom, or any staff member for that matter, and they get sick and they're forced to self-isolate for 14 days, how will that impact their pay? And if they get COVID and they have to be at home until they test negative and it's a month, will they have to use all their time? And if they do use all their time, how will they get compensated?
Dr. Vasquez, go ahead.
Currently, we have the practice in place where an employee is diagnosed or has come in contact with an individual diagnosed with COVID-19 or the coronavirus. They work through Jason Matura. We actually give them temporary duty, they get tested, and then until their results come back. If they, the results come back and they test positive, they remain temporary duty until the duration, and then they come back. Some individuals who do not have symptoms continue to work at home during that temporary duty, but those that are experiencing some of the more severe symptoms, then we keep them on temporary duty until they return back.
Awesome, so they wouldn't have to use their sick time or their leave?
No, currently, no.
Wonderful, thank you. I got lots of emails on that, questions. I was also fire drills. I know that it's a state statute, it's in a federal, but are we going to get any flexibility on fire drills and the safety drills that we have to do monthly?
It's on our list. We don't have a waiver on that, but it would make sense to us that you wouldn't have children all going out en masse and congregating. It certainly flies in the face of what we're trying to do, but we would need a waiver.
Okay, thank you. And then, in terms of launch ed, if we had some of our ESE students choose the launch ed model, and they had an IEP that required them to have like one-on-one, like a one-to-one aide, what would that look like? Would they still be provided the one-to-one aide in the classroom that would work with them, I guess, virtually? Like, what would that, what would that look like?
I thought you were going to ask if the aide could go to their home. I knew the answer to that. I knew that was a no. Dr. Vasquez? Not sure what it was.
Right, so that is a good question for which we do not have an answer. What we, I can tell you what we did through distance learning. Those students that had on their IEPs that they had a one-on-one para, or for some students who may have needed help with translations, they did it virtually, either by phone or in some cases using some type of video conferencing. Our feedback on that is that it was not as effective and did not meet the purpose for having that one-on-one para or assistant assigned to that child. And so, that is something that we would, we would have the IET, IEP team sit down and discuss and figure out what is the best way. Obviously, virtually, we could do it, but we didn't have positive feedback when we did that through distance learning.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, I'm going to add that to the question for our next, no, the one with the, please for change.
Thank you. And then, I had a question, and I know it's been brought up a couple times, so I just need to circle back to it. I know that the launch ed is a commitment of one semester, or virtual is one semester for obvious logistical reasons, but it occurs to me that it would make sense that instead of going to our continuity plan or distance learning, if we had a child that was in classroom, that was a hybrid model, that had launch ed and actual kids, and they got sick, or they got the COVID, that since they're already in that classroom setting, that they should be able just to go home and do launch ed from home? I mean, that's kind of a continuity of services, and that's where we need to be innovative. So, is that a possibility that they could just do that for three or four days and come back without choosing that model?
Absolutely, they would have to come back after that incubation period, which may not be three days. I think the issue is if they are in a face-to-face classroom that does not have that option, that then we would look to pivot to launch ed, which is very similar to launch ed at home, but doesn't have that duality, and so it would be more of a virtual model. But all of that would need to be outlined in our continuity plan. The state will give feedback on the plans this time as well, is what I've read, and while in the past it was a matter of just submitting it and they approved it, that's not the case. And so, we would have, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, there are specific areas for us to not only address that pivot, but with specific populations as well, like ESC, ELL, and other subgroups. So, the continuity plan is much more extensive and is going to, and will probably have to have more than one option based on the models that you choose to forward with.
Wonderful. And then, I believe it was Member Lopez who discussed if a certain model's not working for a student, again, back to that one semester rule, would they be able to switch? And I believe in the emergency order, there was guidelines that if a child is struggling, if progress monitoring shows that they're sliding back, that we have to offer them another alternative or another scenario so that we can move them forward and make sure that there's not more learning loss. Is that correct?
The progress monitoring is meant for us to ensure that children are successful, and we would have to provide interventions. And if those interventions do not prove to be successful, then yes, we would, we would need to change. And I can see that most, most happening with a child who is in virtual learning, that they would need to come into a face-to-face situation, although the opposite could occur as well, but I see it more in the other.
Thank you. And are we, and this is probably for Dr. Jenkins, are we working with other districts to kind of provide continuity? We, you know, we are so close to Osceola, to Lake, to Seminole, and we have teachers, we have parents that work in those counties, and their kids go to school here and vice versa, so are we working to kind of offer some type of continuity?
I actually meet and discuss regularly with a cohort group of Central Florida superintendents. We will not be identical because some went out a bit ahead of the group. Others will be close, very similar to our plan. Well, I guess most, some people have to go back and redo their plans that provided, presented it earlier because now it won't meet some of those requirements, but we are in discussion, but openly acknowledge they probably won't be identical. We're trying to stay close.
Okay, thank you. And then, in reference to Orange County Virtual Schools, I got a question. There's no, currently, there's no postings for teachers. Are we waiting until we get numbers to decide how many teachers we may need to add, and then we'll do the postings at that time?
Sorry. Yes, ma'am. So, for example, we just got permission to add a couple more teachers today through Dr. Vasquez, so you'll see those postings come up. I think it was in elementary and a couple other secondary positions. So, as they are needed, we post them.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then, after-school activities, are we looking at our community partners? Are we trying to work with community partners to be innovative, you know, with the parents that have to go back to work, that may need after-school activities? Are we going to move forward as usual with after-school activities or after-school care?
We are, and currently, we're partnering with both the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA at some of our sites, and they're providing summer camps. And they actually have a good system set up for social distancing and the cleaning, and we would look to continue to partner with them and offer our after-school programs as we have done in the past. Parents are still going to need that support.
Wonderful. And then, I got a question. So, for teachers that have health issues and Orange County Virtual School's not going to work, they, they aren't offered a position to be in the classroom alone because of the numbers and the way it shakes out, will we be doing anything for those teachers, like some type of pandemic stabbatical so they don't lose time and they can come back when there's a vaccine with kind of seamlessly? I understand pay would be an issue, but would we be able to offer them something like that?
Yeah, they would be covered under our sick leave policy, that they would be, they would be off. Now, they would exhaust their paid sick leave, and then it would be unpaid after they exhausted. But yeah, they get up to a year's worth of leave under our collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, thank you. And then, my last two questions, I'll put them together because they're simple. How are we going to keep masks on our pre-K kindergarten, first and second graders? I think our teachers can spend the majority of their time trying to tell the kids to keep a mask on. That's going to be a struggle. And number two, progress monitoring, will, can we get assurances that those progress monitorings will not be graded?
So, masks are going to be difficult even for adults, I, and, pre-K, it is.
Hey, we're not talking about masks, we're talking about shields.
Shields.
A little easier.
Yeah. They'll still, it is. And as with all things with our younger children when they're coming in, you know, many of them, that's, that may be their first experience, so they have to learn, you know, to share, they have to learn sometimes how to walk in line, personal space, so we will work with them. We're also going to continue to be in part in communication, both with Nemours, Dr. Pino, as we get more information. As we know, things have changed significantly in just a month, and so, that's why we said that plan is, has to be fluid, and it will require us to evaluate and make any needed changes. I can tell you that just today I read an email that one of the area superintendents sent me, and it's a teacher who's doing a summer camp. Work, it's not pre-K, but it's elementary-level children. He thought it was going to be incredibly difficult with the masks and that he would have to spend most of his time outside, and he says that, you know, he was pleasantly surprised that the kids are keeping it on, it hasn't been difficult, and it's a, it's a half-day program. So, it's one of the things that we will have to work with and monitor and adapt based on new information.
Because I can envision that, you know, having a rainy nose and pushing the mask down, or pushing the shield up and wiping it on there, or sneezing and taking their mask so they could sneeze.
But we have great teachers, and if you think about the time that they spend, you know, at the beginning of the year, and they work on routines and procedures and rules, and they model, and this is what it looks like, this is what it doesn't look like, we have phenomenal teachers that will be able to work on that. And then, your second question, yes. So, progress monitoring is a very personal subject as it relates to a teacher, and so one, one could say that a quiz is a progress monitoring tool, because you're able to assess how much a child learned for a particular unit or area of study. What I'm interpreting your question to be, and I could be wrong, is that if we're using a tool, like a progress monitoring tool that is looking to assess over a long period of time, I'll use iReady even though we are looking at other options, that those would not be graded. And I would say, yes, we would continue to push the message that the PMAs, the ones that we're going to use with NWEA, that those are not to be graded, those are to solely be used to inform instruction. And there are plenty of other assignments that can be given and graded where we don't need to use those progress monitoring tools.
Thank you.
Okay, last, last board member on this before we go to our last segment is Member Cobert.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick thank you to all of the staff in the room and the community out there that's watching for your stamina in this now eight-and-a-half-hour work session with 20 more slides to go. So, very much appreciate that because this is so important to the community, and it is stretching out as we are continuing to get questions from the public, so I greatly appreciate your patience and stamina. You may not have the answers to these questions, but I want to throw them out and put them on your list as we seek answers in the next week or so. One is a clear plan for volunteers. So, on the one hand, that's bringing additional people onto our campus. On the other hand, they could be vital as we look to supply lunches to families who are learning virtually but still need those meals provided. Or as a tool to, if we end up eating lunches in class, to give those teachers a break, volunteers could be vital to providing that break. So, I think those clear guidelines for volunteers will be very important. I did have a question, and I think this is pretty logical, but if a, if a student chooses launch ed at home for the fall, and their family is comfortable with them returning to school in January, will they stay with the same teacher that they were learning with virtually? That is one question that has come up.
So, there are some qualifiers there, because what if that teacher wants to do something different for January? So, I wouldn't want to commit that that teacher will go to face-to-face, because if the state extends, for example, the innovative model, that teacher might want to remain in the launch ed at home model, so I wouldn't want to commit the teachers at this point.
Right, okay, so again, that goes back to our flexibility and patience, and we are appreciating that partnership from the community in understanding that some of these will continue to be unknowns, and we just need to be comfortable with that. The subject came up about drills, and I just want the board to know that that is on the list for the Florida School Board Association to advocate for suspension of some of those drills, that some of that could be done with videos in the classroom instead of, you know, hundreds of students exiting the building. And then, finally, I am having questions about pre-K and VPK. Will those also be offered virtually and with launch ed?
At this time, we are proposing that that is an available model for all students. Again, really need to look at the specifics for the plan. I don't recall if it was K through 12 or if included pre-K. Our funding's a little bit different for pre-K, but currently, if we're allowed, yes, we would offer that for our pre-K students as well.
Very good, thank you.
Member Cobert, that complete your questions?
Yes, it does, Chair, thank you.
Let me also commend you for your work with FSBA in putting together the document that I think we've all found extremely helpful. I know it was a lot of time and effort, and we very much appreciate your good work on that.
Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. Let me call in Dr. Gordon. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized. Let me try again. There we go. Dr. Gordon?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Okay, just put me back on the speaking. I'll ask this question, and it's a question for John, because you, you know, as I said before, you have listeners out there, a lot of them are parents, several of them are parents, and a lot of teachers, and with our discussion there, getting confused about the pain and different things. So, just put me back, and I'll try to see if I can get a good understanding here of what they are asking, because it's just, it's confusing.
Okay, yeah, we'll put you back in the queue.
Okay, so just put me, have, have, uh, Dr. Paul Marini, please be back on the speaking order, and I will try to get some clarity on what they are trying to say, because now we got them all upset, because they are hearing one board member, and they're hearing another, and they are hearing answers, and down there, they're confused. But John, John, I'm able to answer it, I'm sure. Okay.
Okay, so let's do this. We're going to go proceed forward with the next segment, and during that segment, we also have a financial update, and that would be a perfect time to circle back and clarify and answer Dr. Gordon's questions. So, Dr. Vasquez, you're recognized.
What I will do, Chair, since they, since my people know my number's available till 3 o'clock in the morning, they all have it, so what I will do is if I get a clarity from what they're trying to get, I'll text it to John, and then that way he'll be able to have an answer, or not, if not the superintendent or someone, to be able to answer it for them.
Perfect, thank you. That'd be very helpful.
Thank you.
Chairman, Chair.
Yes, John?
Do you have an answer on the unemployment comp?
Yes.
Your mic's off. Is it on now?
So that, everybody can hear you.
Continuing with the theme, under 443.0913A, the time between academic periods is not compensable for unemployment comp, so you cannot pay that. Also, if you are, the money that is, goes to that, it's funded, those are funded by comp, or contributions that we as the employer make. So, the more of our employees that get unemployment comp, the higher the contributions we have to make. But the statute's very clear, and there's case law on it, that the period in between academic terms, they academic terms, they are not compensable.
But we're already paying them for pre-planning day?
Yeah, you're paying, yes.
For a pre-planning day, which is in between academic periods. No?
Well, yes. Pre-planning is, that's, that's correct. The presumption I made from the question, and if I'm presuming wrong, I apologize. The presumption I was making for the question is if they're not working, if we move it back and we don't have them in pre-planning, could we advance compensation or could they get unemployment compensation for days they weren't working?
Okay. So I think where the board members that have brought this up were coming from was that that could be professional development, which could also be pre-planning.
It could be. So, so here's the situation with that. They have 197, they being the teachers, I apologize. They have 197 duty days under our contract, 180 of which are instructional days. Six days are pre-planning days, two days are post-planning days, three days are promised for the end of the nine-week workdays, and there's a couple more. They're, they're committed days, so there is, there would have to, we would have to go back to the unions to negotiate some flexibility into the usage of those days if we were going to do that.
Okay. So it's not a hard and fast, absolutely no, but it's not looking good.
Well, looks, looks, looks good is a relative term. Um, it, it's not a hard and fast no, but it would take some work.
Okay. So it's a, okay. It's a possibility. Dr. Vasquez. But I also, I think obviously we need to hear from Dale in terms of what is the fiscal impact of that. Dr. Vasquez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right. Let's talk a little bit about school clinics. Uh, school health clinics are funded a school health assistant, and they typically have someone else trained as a designee to oversee the clinic. They, excuse me, each clinic area will be required to be equipped with daily access to personal protection equipment, including gloves, masks, and face shields. They will also have a no-touch infrared thermometer and have direct access to a sink. Clinics will have two designated areas to serve students with social distancing. Personal protective equipment must be used in both of the rooms. One room, we are designating as a well room where we would provide triage, a treatment room, distribution of medicine, taking care of a sprained ankle. The other room, the sick room, is where we would have students that are showing symptoms of COVID-19, including fevers, a cough, a sore throat, vomiting, and chills. If the initial temperature of a student is taken and it is over 100.4, the clinic staff will direct the student to sit quietly for three to five minutes, and then the student will be rechecked to confirm the reading before contacting the parent and sending them home. In additions, the school clinic staff will be required to participate in training. They will wear personal protective equipment and adhere to social distancing to the extent possible. They will utilize the district temperature screening with a no-touch infrared thermometer. And we've already addressed if temperature is taken, it's over 100.4, it will be rechecked and then the child is sent home. Do you want me to continue into cleaning and disinfecting or are there questions regarding the clinic?
Are there questions from the board? I don't see anyone queued up. Then let's, let's continue.
All right. So let's talk about cleaning and disinfecting. So unoccupied areas for seven or more days need to be periodically cleaned, and that is more of a practice that's in place currently because schools are empty. Once school starts, we know that the majority of buildings are occupied. We will reinforce cleaning practices for outdoor areas, prioritize disinfecting frequently touched areas, maintain all the resources and equipment that's needed for cleaning and disinfecting. We're going to reduce the sharing of common spaces and frequently touched objects, clean dirty surfaces with soap and water prior to any disinfect, disinfection, use an EPA-approved disinfectant against COVID-19, follow all label directions, and keep any and all disinfectants out of the reach of children. Next, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Bill Nguyen, who will discuss transportation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Dr. Castor-Dentel. Sorry. Didn't know the protocol with different people here.
We're just trying to plow through.
I just have a question about the, the cleaning.
Yes.
Can I ask about that before we get to transportation?
Yeah.
Okay. The custodial staff, who supervises them? Is that a, a principal or assistant principal or is it custodial supervisor? Who makes sure that that gets done?
It's centralized services. Custodial supervision comes from centralized service. There's a lead custodian at the school who has oversight, and then we have mid-level managers that visit the schools for inspections as well.
Okay. I, I know that that might not give enough confidence, that all those surfaces are being cleaned by the people who are working in the schools. Is there another level of supervision that we could implement to really ensure that that's happening?
We'll add it to the list.
Okay. And there is also a question about whether teachers would be responsible for cleaning up in between classes. Um, I know students, we don't recommend students do that, but would that be added to teachers' job?
So that's a collective bargaining issue that you're broaching. So need to let that go to the table.
Okay.
I, I will tell you.
Currently, they don't, right?
I'm sorry?
They currently do not.
They are not responsible for that, but I know lots of teachers who take responsibility because they want their classroom to be germ-free. I know they've done it before, but it is not part of their job description and should, if it's going to be a requirement, would go to the collective bargaining table at least for a discussion. But I know we have teachers who are committed to keeping their work areas clean and safe, both for themselves and for their students.
Um, they don't always have the supplies to do that themselves, though. So that's, that's a whole other area of procurement of all those PPE supplies.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe the Chair is back. Vice Chair Gould is the next to be recognized Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gould.
We only got to one section.
Thank you, Chair, and, and thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we have some background noise, but we can hear you. Does not sound like you're social distancing, though.
I lost my earbud.
Vice Chair Gould?
Can you hear me all right now?
We, we do. It sounds like you're having a party in the background.
Yeah. Um, okay. So going back to, I'm sorry, I wanted to go back to the unemployment issue. Um, I, I understand the unemployment payment that we pay, but there are multiple CARES Act programs for people who lose their wages or have interrupted wages, and that's specifically what I would like us to look into. I just didn't want to lose that. And I know that in, in follow-up to the, the safety and security and cleanliness component, I know that in the think tank summaries and in some of the presentations, we had talked about having places where, um, there would be stations for cleaning and making sure that all those things happen. I would advocate that we have expertise on our campus that can help make sure that that education stays up and, um, that we stay consistent with, with our supplies and all of those things. And that's in our school nurses and aides. And we have many registered nurses that are not working at the registered nurse level, and I would like to know their financial impact in order to convert them and if we could possibly do some kind of a differential or stipend for an additional duty during this period and then have that sunset. That may be more than we can answer to see.
Dr. Jenkins said, "We'll look into it." Her mic was not on.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Have we called on everyone here? Because I do not see Dr. Gordon's name checked off. Or is that to come back to, John? That was to come back to, right?
Yeah.
After we get clarification? Okay. So, Dr. Jenkins, are we ready to move on? I'm sorry. Member Byrd, you're recognized.
And Chairman, I apologize. I, I had asked them to plow through until we got to a certain spot for breaking in for questions, but it sort of went off, off track.
So where are we? I'm a little confused.
Yeah, we've only covered two more, we've only covered.
Transportation.
Two more sections. So we're at transportation. I apologize.
Okay.
We just got off track a little. Someone just jumped in and asked a question out of, out of the regular protocol, and so we faltered.
All right. So are we hearing from Member Byrd, I guess? Member Byrd, we'll hear from you first.
Well, it was about the clinic. If you would, I mean, it was about cleaning and disinfecting. If you would rather wait.
No, go ahead. We stopped now, so go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the item, keep disinfectants out of reach of children, and this kind of goes to what Dr. Castor-Dentel said. Would that include our high school and middle school students? Because I think that they could be very useful when they leave, if, if they have to leave a classroom to get a wipe and wipe their desk, or when they come into a classroom, I think that might even be better, they wipe and clean the desk before they sit down? Is that, would that be something that we'd be able to look at as opposed to keeping all of the disinfectants out of all their hands?
So I think we would need to review. There's something that I remember about children and even using certain chemicals because we don't know if they'll have any type of allergic reaction, but certainly we'll add it to the list of questions.
Okay. And then I just want to kind of reiterate what Dr. Castor-Dentel said, and I've gotten a lot of emails about this, the concern for the supplies being available, the wipes, the soap, the sanitizer, and how we can ensure our public and our parents that that's not going to be an issue. And I like the idea of maybe having a team of people at each school, that's their, that's part of their job is to go around and make sure all that stuff is stocked, like a double, a double check. You know what I mean? Some way we can just ensure that for our public.
Any other questions, Member Byrd? Member Gallo, is this on the same subject? Okay. I'm not taking any more breaks. Huh? Uh, Member Gordon? Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see Dr. Gordon there. He was standing in front of the thing, so I missed it. Sorry. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized.
Okay. Give me a minute here. Okay. Let me. Okay. Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Gordon, we can hear you.
He asked of this because some kind of way, um, our, our audience is, is confused with the, with the COVID, and they're confused with the bargaining, uh, procedures, and they're confused with the contract. And, and what I mean by that there, um, I'm, I'm trying to see, I don't know, is, is there a number? See, that's why we got to communicate and talk. I mean, surveys are great, but it's not, it's not, it's not a human being. I told you how I had to brag on the, on the ESD team for helping me out this summer and finding almost a cure for people that are calling in and people want to talk. And, um, and they're concerned about if they have COVID already and they are working this summer because people don't want to hear that openly. They want to know what kind of days can they use? And then if they get it, what days are they going to have? But according to expedite this, is there a number or email? Dr. Jenkins, you used to split up beautiful emails. You used to send them out and people could write up. People want you to know who they, I mean, you know, some people just don't want people to know things. But that was a phone that somebody could call, um, so that they can get the professional answers because they're confused out there right now. I'm recording several of our students. And I keep getting the same, and it's all about, um, employee, let me try to get this down. If they catch the COVID, do they get TDY or do they have time? And I told him that these are people who probably are just tuning in because some of this have already been addressed, and to ask them to go back and pick up from 12:15 to now was just a slap of faith. How, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, and Acting General Counsel, how in the world will the General Counsel go lying to others? What can we get our listeners to do because the next meeting is the board meeting? And we're going to be up there, but people still trying to find answers. So how can they get answers to their question? I'm going to refer all of the questions that they are concerned about to you guys and let's see what we can come up with and what Dr. Jenkins can come up with and so expedite this.
You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Dr. Gordon, if somebody has been notified that they've been exposed to the virus or they have contracted the virus, what they do is they contact our Professional Standards Office. The email for that is professionalstandards@ocps.
I, I know, but you remember Dr. Dina also, they know, that's not the question. They need some answers. Okay. It may be family, they got ex-members, they are exposed, they're concerned about what days they can use because they have some misunderstanding here today about the case.
And if you contact Professional Standards, Dr. Gordon, what they do is they have what's known as a medical ROD program, Relief of Duty. And so what happens is, is we put those who are needing to get tested, who are our employees, on Relief of Duty until such time as those test results come back. If the test results come back negative, then they can come back to work. If the test results come back positive, they stay on the medical relief of duty until such time as they get cleared to come back to, to work after dealing with the virus. So that would be their avenue.
So you, you didn't answer that before, did you? I don't think you did, did you?
Um, I don't believe I answered that up until now.
Okay. Very good. That might, that answered one. So where would they go if they have questions? Because we getting ready to, I, I'm sure the Chair's going to end sooner or later when we get through. So where was your, where would our listeners go if they have answers? If they have questions that they need answers to?
What they would do is they would contact Professional Standards. So you have professionalstandards@ocps.net, and also you can contact them directly 407-317-3239.
So if they're exposed at work, what, what, where would the parents go? The parents are not working for us. We're working for them.
So the question is if parents are exposed to the virus, like, yeah, they would probably contact the Health Department to get further guidance.
So, and then, so the teachers would have to use their sick leave, or the parents would have to use their sick leave? This is what people are wondering. They are working in our building. That's what I'm saying. Can that, let me refer this to Dr. Jenkins, um, um, Madam Chair.
Parents first.
Let me refer this to Dr. Jenkins.
Dr. Jenkins.
Yeah, we have sent out, Dr. Gordon, have sent out information. We will send it out again with all of that contact information for all of our employees so that it is clear. Happy to send it out again. We are also, I was just talking to Mr. Howard, we will also put out an FAQ document, Frequently Asked Questions, and crank up, remind folks that our employee hotline is still available, which is run through our Human Resources Department. We will take care of that.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm talking about, how are we answering, it's a heck of a, how are we answering questions from Don't You Public? from down to public, business partners, parents, teachers, and staff after tonight's meeting? Because there's still people online, the 4,650-something people are still online, believe it or not. So how, if they have a burning question, they gotta wait until, you all know everybody's not going to answer that phone. You guys don't even answer what we call it. You know? What number, is there a line that you could set up, Dr. Jenkins? Or something that you've done in the past that could at least expedite and get at least most of these questions answered before next Tuesday, July 17th, July, what is it, 14th?
We will certainly work on something for the public. We have something in place for employees, but we will need to work on something for the public, Dr. Gordon. I don't have something for that tonight.
Okay, but we need it. We need it because everybody's not an employee. They're concerned because they have our parents employed. Okay, let me, let it be like that because people have questions, and there's no way in the world we're going to be able to answer every one of them tonight.
So, Dr. Jenkins. Got it. I know we had another board member that wanted to know, where should we email questions about, specific questions about the plans that we're considering? And I think Dr. Gordon's question is for those who want to call. So if we could have both for all board members, a phone number for people with questions about the plans that are being considered, and questions, and a way to email. So there's a point of contact or a number that I think would be helpful to all of us. Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, just have a quick question. We can move on. For the guidance in cleaning, disinfecting, and I did have to step out, so if this was asked and answered, I apologize. I got quite a few emails about the limited use of janitorial staff from last year, like a lot of, a lot of classrooms weren't getting cleaned, or just trash was being dumped. It was just the basic because there was janitorial shortages. We're going to require more janitorial staff than ever before to make sure that our, that we're adhering to these protocols. So have we looked into that? And do we know what that might look like?
It's on the list. We actually have temp services and custodial substitutes that we can use as well. We are aware of it.
Thank you.
All right. Shall we move on to transportation? Mr. Nguyen, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Bus service will continue to be available to those students who reside two miles or more from their homes, or as transportation is required on a student's individualized education plan as defined by state statute or administrative rule. To reduce the minimum, or to reduce or minimize contact with other students in closed quarters, our parents are encouraged to transport their students in their personal vehicle to and from school if they can. And to provide six feet between students on the bus would not be practical. This means a bus could only transport 13 to 26 students. At minimum, this would double the number of current buses the district has based upon our current ridership or over 1,000 additional buses. The purchase of 1,000 additional buses would cost approximately $120 million. Also, when adding buses to accommodate fewer students, please also understand it will also include more drivers and mechanics to service the buses. Independent upon the number of buses may also require additional facilities needed to park and service these buses as well. As of July 1st, the transportation team has contacted over 100 applicants and interviewed over 40, and those 40 are going through the process of moving to the next level to go into training. Hiring bus drivers continue to be a challenge even during this period, as in addition to the district's hiring requirements, drivers must also be able to pass an Department of Transportation Medical Physical, and also must have a commercial driver's license to operate a school bus. The district does provide training to help individuals obtain a C D L, and also training classes have been ongoing. I'll put in my shameless plug now. We are hiring bus drivers, so anyone interested in a new career or driving a bus can apply at www OCPS.net. Also, after reviewing other school district plans and discussions with health experts, students can sit closer together with a lower risk of transmitting the virus as if everyone is wearing a face covering or a mask. In doing so, we can probably seat two or three students to a bus, so we can go up to 52 students and start from there. Also, understand our ride time is relatively short, so the exposure would be limited. Next slide, please. It is vital to have parental support to help minimize the spread of the virus by helping students maintain social distancing at the bus stops prior to the bus arrival, and also to have face coverings or masks for their students, both for the bus ride and also at school. OCPS Transportation Services will follow CDC recommendations to clean and sanitize high-touch areas on the buses, and this will be at minimum two times a day, with the cleaning after the morning runs and after the evening runs. Our personal protective equipment is critical to ensuring everyone's safety and health, and drivers and monitors will be provided protective equipment, and the district will make available disposable masks available to any student without a face covering before boarding the bus. Another measure to minimize the risk of spreading the virus is that we'll open a number of windows and vents on the buses to improve circulation within the passenger compartment while transporting the students. And also to minimize the time that students spend in the aisles in the congestion, we will assign seats in order to load from the back of the bus to the front, and then in the afternoons unload from the front of the bus to the rear. And this will minimize the number of students congregated in the aisles and passing each other. And finally, temperature checks will not be conducted at the bus stops, as this will increase the time to load the buses, and the bus drivers will not leave a student behind at a bus stop should they test over 100.4 degrees. As Dr. Pino said earlier, with face coverings and masks, we can minimize the transmission of the virus. Next, I'd like to ask our Fire Marshal, Bill Farhat, to come back up to talk about the COVID-19 Response Plan. Thank you.
So the graphic you see there is a CDC guideline that we are using, and it's, it may be a little bit confusing, so I'm going to explain it. Excuse me. The lower left would have been no community spread, and that would have been the period of time in January, February this year where we did not have an issue. The lower right, if the far right portion of that is where we are now, it's a substantial spread. As Dr. Pino says, we're flattening the curve somewhat, we're starting to shift towards moderate. And that should be familiar to us of what we're facing right now, what we've done. We've made the changes to how education is being delivered and considering what will be in the future. It is the upper part that is kind of the area where we should focus on for a moment on the discovery of a COVID-infected person. What are the, how to assess that risk? And frankly, there are a lot of factors that have to be considered. We will need to engage the Department of Health, and we'll notify them anytime we have a COVID exposure, if they aren't already aware. And the decision-making processes are fluid, and they are very situational in nature based upon location of the, where it occurred, depending on what school it was, depending on what type of protection was being used. If everyone is wearing a mask, and everyone is distant, and everyone is using good personal hygiene, it's the best-case scenario, and there may not need to be much action taken. Conversely, if people are not wearing their masks, or not, or being close together, not following our directives, it could cause a catastrophic change, where many people would have to be sent home in isolation. So the Department of Health would give us that guidance. They would make, help us make those decisions. It's not something we would do on our own, and we cannot have a firm protocol in place because we can't assess that. It requires the epidemiologist that Dr. Pino spoke to earlier, who can help us assess that and make the decision. As on the right-hand side of that page, we do talk about what will happen, using Launch Ed to our advantage, if, and even the lowest-risk scenario, six students would be sent home. And as it gets worse, the instructional continuity plan would be activated. Next slide, please. So as we do now, currently, if we have an infected person that is discovered within our staff, we are working with the Department of Health. We are making decisions. We have contact tracing within our organization to see who's been involved. As Mr. Palmer you just spoke to, the Professional Standards is involved, and they make decisions on who is sent home, and they communicate with the staff member formally, and they send them formal information about what they are to do, they can do to become brought back. When it comes to students, you know, that would be a little bit different in the sense we would use the Department of Health's recommendations on what best to do in that. Clean disinfect thoroughly for the exposed areas is quite obvious, and we have been doing that already, if you're not aware of that. Whenever we have an exposure now, our custodial services staff are entering, they have a team that goes in and cleans afterwards so we can reenter those spaces, because obviously if we could not do that, we couldn't use them. Decisions about school dismissal are big decisions, obviously, and we need the Department of Health's assistance in that as well. And I'll move on to the next slide. Risk reduction is, has been spoken about already, prior to me stepping up here. You guys are a good culture of teaching. We'll give their teachers the tools to reinforce good habits and help them, help students, and remind them of what can be done to minimize the risk. You know, an important point here is we cannot eliminate risk. We can minimize it with our actions. Limiting risk is a great goal, but it's not realistic. We should be aware of that, that there's always going to be risk no matter what decision you make, what type of delivery the education is going to be for us, for our students. So if, you know, some of the obvious things are, you know, staggering entry of walkers and car riders, control the entry point. You know, obviously, our high schools, you can have 1,000 people walking through entry right at the bell time, so we want to be managing that in a manner to try to spread our students out so we aren't having preventable issues occur. The signage that we've talked about previously would have to be employed, the, the teaching of that, the monitoring of that. It's going to require a lot more supervision by our administrative staff as well. They are going to have to keep an eye on our students in trying to reinforce in our passing periods and other times children would choose or typically congregate. Other considerations could be redesigning the school day, which has also been discussed, and, you know, the cloth face coverings, you know, it is mandated now. It's something that really needs to be considered for going in the future, if the guidance does change at the county level. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins. I'm sorry. Microphone?
We are ready for mental health and social emotional well-being. We can cover that swiftly, as some of this was already presented to the board previously, but it is worth a review and how it will relate in the coming months. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you. Our reentry plan will include a tiered system of support for both students and staff's social emotional well-being. We will use Tier One, the Tier One support will include universal support for all. Tier Two would include small group support, and Tier Three would focus on individual support. This should be a familiar slide. This recaps some of what we did, when we pivoted, and what our plans are. Our district developed this plan for support and continuity of social emotional learning during April and May. The Chief Academic Office provided distance-learning mental health resources through Canvas. Additionally, Mental Health Help Line was established and served by District Mental Health Counselors in June and July. Professional development to support students and staff's social emotional learning is being provided. Additionally, district social workers will be available to support students in crisis during summer school. During pre-planning, a social emotional learning overview will be provided for all instructional staff. This overview will show how OCPS is supporting social emotional learning through the OCPS 2025 Strategic Plan, introduce the research-based framework OCPS will use, and highlight the available S E L curriculums and resources. In the first two weeks of school, we will be focused on increasing access to social emotional learning with a classroom meeting structure through blended learning options. Additionally, school council supports, such as classroom lessons and small groups, will be available for all students. Through the remainder of the school year, our district will support social emotional learning through the four pillars, excuse me, the three pillars of interpersonal, intrapersonal, and decision-making training. We will also have a district-wide focus on building and supporting the school culture and climate for social and emotional learning. Next, let's talk briefly about professional development and training. All instructional staff will need to take either self-paced or face-to-face courses during pre-planning on topics that include reopening, the instructional models, OCPS Launch Ed, the Instructional Continuity Plan for extended closures, and safety and sanitation guidelines. All administrative staff will need to take a similar self-paced course before pre-planning. Classified staff will also need to take similar courses, including those on safety and sanitation guidelines during the first week of school. Now, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, who will discuss financial implications and the CARES Act.
There are financial implications that we must consider when developing our school reopening plan. The first financial implication to highlight is the potential decline in our overall enrollment or F T E as a result of the pandemic. Parents may use this crisis as an opportunity to explore other options for their child's education. Parents may be convinced that virtual education is the best way to go. Still, others may come back to the public school system due to educational offerings or financial considerations. The bottom line is that we're only funded for the students we have in our schools, so we must be ready to adjust our school budgets based upon the students we serve and any flexibility provided by the state. The second financial implication to remind you of is that the state funds our virtual students at a significantly reduced amount. The specific amount is dependent upon the grade level and the program of each of our students. But as an example, our K3 basic student would receive about 25% less funding, or about $1,823 less as a virtual student than they would as a face-to-face student. In addition, the state only provides funding for students who successfully complete each virtual course. The next implication to mention is the cost of personal protective equipment. We recently placed an order for 460 reusable masks for our students at a cost of just over $400,000. That's providing like two reusable masks per student. We also placed an order for 10,000 gallons of hand sanitizer at a cost of about $140,000. Orders were also made for 1,000 goggles and 1,000 face shields for staff working with specific student populations. Donations have also been secured from various sources throughout this crisis, and the state just supplied all school districts with reusable masks for staff. The cost for P P E should be eligible for 75% reimbursement from FEMA and another 12.5% from the state. However, we should expect to have to absorb those costs initially since FEMA reimbursements usually lag several years. Overall, our total spend to date is around 1.1 million on P P E. Also, our Facilities Division has estimated the cost of classroom shields for all elementary student stations, and that's 5.3 million. No purchases have been made, they just looked into estimating the cost of that. There's also a recommended need to purchase additional electrostatic sprayers for disinfection purposes at all our schools and work locations. This will cost an estimated additional $70,000. We have some of those currently, but we need to actually add about twice as many as we currently have now. Lastly, the option to use Launch Ed as an instructional delivery method was mentioned earlier in the presentation. This option would require us to purchase robotic cameras along with an iPad associated with each of those cameras. The estimated cost to purchase additional The estimated cost to purchase additional equipment is just over $1.4 million. That would be an additional 1,340 robotic cameras and those associated iPads. Next slide. The CARES Act is providing some resources specifically for education. The largest portion of dollars coming to O C P S is the S R dollars for K-12. We've talked about these in the past. Our 90% entitlement allocation exceeds $55 million, but after you deduct the amount that'll go to charter schools and sharing equitable services to private schools, the amount remaining to support our traditional schools is $48.7 million. As we have shared before, we've also earmarked $7.9 million of those dollars for devices to complete the one-to-one initiative at all our elementary schools. We are also committing $2.4 million for regression intervention materials for our schools. And lastly, we are reserving an amount of approximately $38.4 million in preparation for the upcoming revenue shortfall that will impact the state budget for education in this new fiscal year that just began July 1st. While the governor's just recently signed off on the budget approved by the legislature during the regular session, we must remember that that budget was based upon revenue estimates prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. Based upon feedback from state sources, a special session to adjust the budget for revenue shortfalls will not happen until after the November election. It is only prudent to reserve as much non-recurring revenue or fund balance as possible, given the anticipated state budget shortfall. And some of those shortfalls are estimating, you know, it could be $8 billion. That's what we heard from Moody's and some other estimates I've seen recently coming close to that number as well. But really, nobody knows what the shortfall will be, it's dependent on, you know, how soon our economy is able to recover from this pandemic. The state general revenue shortfall just for April and May alone was $1.6 billion. Also, as part of the CARE Act, we have the GEAR dollars. These are the dollars that were provided to the governors of each state to use for education at their discretion. We have received our specific allocation amount for the summer recovery program. After, again, deducting the portion for charter schools, along with sharing of equitable services to private schools, the amount remaining to support our traditional schools is $4.6 million. These dollars will be used to help fund the summer school program that will start next week, as well as hopefully our third-grade reading camp that we had this past June. The remaining dollars will be used for other academic recovery efforts completed prior to October 31st of this year. We will continue to monitor federal legislation to see if there'll be any further federally for anticipated revenue shortfalls that all states are experiencing due to the shutdown of the economy. With that, I think I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. A couple of additional notes. So when we had the questions earlier regarding doing something creative and perhaps paying teachers to work earlier and having students come later, this is the information I wanted you to be privy to. So we have heard indication that even if the state decides to use their rainy day fund, it may not be sufficient to plug the hole. We simply do not know, because we don't know how large that hole will be. We do know Florida's economy will not recover on the short quarter, because it is based on taxes and largely on tourism. And so we have had advisement that some of that CARES Act money should be reserved for a potential shortfall. If there is a recalculation in January to make amends for a shortfall, then in essence, the district would have difficult decisions to make to balance the budget. So I'm a pretty strong proponent, quite conservative, that we ought to reserve some of that money for a potential shortfall if we get additional federal relief, if the state does something different, or if our economy rebounds more quickly than expected. Typical, I believe Moody, or it may have been the, another source suggested probably about a three-year, that was McKinsey and Company, said it probably would be about a three-year run to get back what you've lost in the Florida economy. Nobody knows. There's no crystal ball, there's no perfect calculation, but I would submit to you that you wouldn't want to spend down all of your CARES Act money, and it has been suggested among the finance officers and state organization that we probably ought to reserve some of it for what is bound to happen in January. That being said, the finance officers also asked, one of the holes that we'd like to see plugged is the finance officer's request that we have the same funding for face-to-face versus virtual funding, because unlike Florida Virtual or any other virtual school, we still have overhead costs, we still have classrooms, we still have buildings. We would like to see this year equal funding for virtual versus face-to-face to help provide some relief. There has, to this date, been no response, Mr. Kelly?
Well, some of the information we received in yesterday's call essentially said for virtual funding, you're going to continue to be funded just like past years, so there will be that reduction, unless there's some movement or change. Maybe we'll get further details later, later this week, but it appears like virtual funding will be that reduced funding, so there is no help there.
What we may get some relief for is for our innovation. If we do the innovative and it is approved, then they will fund that at the straight face-to-face level as well. Launch Ed cameras, certainly, those are tools we would like to have. As I mentioned earlier, we can run the Launch Ed at-home program with or without them. They certainly will make the classrooms more engaging. That seems like a minimal investment that I would endorse. And of course, then we've committed to the additional dollars to finish out those students who do not have their laptops at the one-to-one level just yet. So a lot remains to be seen. I am not holding out hope that we would have some agreement between two houses of Congress on additional relief, certainly not before the election, but we will keep our eye on all of those potential sources. I think it's prudent on our part to be careful, to be wise, to be strategic about those dollars. That being said, for all that we have, I know we have questions, so I'll reserve my final comments. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins. Yeah, we have, I think, all the board members want to comment and ask questions, which makes a lot of sense before we close out the evening. So let me start with Member Lopez. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to start with a clarification, because I received an email while we're talking here. I think that everybody here is receiving emails over and over and over, so we receive hundreds of emails about this important topic, and I understand and I like it. I'm sad that I cannot respond in the same way that I'm receiving the emails, that I think that we are facing the same situation, but I want to make a clarification. When I said that I did not receive any email from my constituents, I received the majority of my emails, the majority of the emails that I received from my constituents in District Two, it was against the face-to-face model, but I received a few of constituent, a few of emails that are in favor of the face-to-face, but it's a few. I don't know if the other school board members are facing the same situation, but, you know, I just want to make sure, because the Sentinel already published something, so they were sending the comments, so I want to, you know, to be transparent and honest that I received a few of those. Maybe I did not use the word "majority" and "few," so my apologies on that side. And also, I want to talk about page 74, about transportation, because for me is, I think, I believe that the students that are using the buses will have a higher risk to get COVID because of this situation. Even when on the third point said social distancing, 13 to 26 students per bus on buses would not be practical because of the money challenges on this case, and maybe because of, obviously, finding drivers and mechanics is also a challenge as well. I think that the face covering requirement while riding can increase capacity, up to two students per seat, 52 students maximum, but how much control does a bus driver have while, you know, driving the bus? Because he can say, okay, I have 52 students, I already, I already put everybody in place based on the guidelines, but how much control? How can we deal with that? I think that is a big risk. I'm thinking about my overpopulated schools. I know that maybe we're not going to have the same amount of students in the, in those schools, because maybe they can, they can choose, and, but this, the transportation, and maybe you have to encourage, and even on page 60, 74, is saying parents are encouraged to transport students to and from school in their personal vehicles. I think that also we have students that have vehicles, but maybe the majority of the students that are using the transportation is because they need it. If they have the parents, maybe they don't take the buses. I don't know, maybe, I'm thinking about the working families on this side. I think that, I don't know, maybe having the buses transporting, maybe I have, I need more feedback on this matter, because I think that, I don't know if we can have different schedule for the buses to avoid having so many kids at the same time in the bus. I think that is a risk.
Dr. Jenkins?
So, Member Lopez, you raised some critical points, that we might have considered some different matters before yesterday's emergency order. So you could have tried to do some creative things. I will tell you, some districts actually had plans in place that they approved, perhaps the A-day, B-day, where you're trying to split your population and all the students don't come on the same day. That's not allowed now. You have to offer five days a week face-to-face, and so that basically sets aside those issues. And so if you know you have to offer five days face-to-face, we've got a couple of ways to try to decrease the numbers on the bus. One is to say, if you have the capacity, if you have the ability, please transport your own child. We would love for you to help us have some relief. If your child has to ride the bus, then they're going to need to wear a face covering, and we need parents to say to their young people that are riding the buses, keep the face mask on on the bus, sit down. I mean, it sort of gives a different feel to the bus when students have to sit on with face masks, so we're hoping for great behavior, but if not, we have code of conduct that will have repercussions for someone who misbehaves on the bus. But if we have to, we don't have the dollars nor the capacity to buy several more buses to cut those numbers down, so we have to do the face covering, two to a seat, load from the front to the back, and then, I'm sorry, load from the back to the front, and then exit from the front to the back to help them not have to cross each other in the aisles. We've got some strategies that will help with that, and those are basically our only choices. So we need help from our parents, certainly, and those that are able to transport. We need them to do, those that are not able to transport, support us on the mask. Bus driver will have disposable mask there if the students don't come with one, and support us on appropriate behavior on the bus. And that's where we're left after yesterday's emergency order.
Thank you. I also have another question on page 75. Need parental support for social distancing at bus stops prior to the bus arrivals and use of face covering for bus ride to reduce the spread of the virus? That parent, that would be a support in that situation, is going to be an addition. I believe that we, they have, you know, the parents that are going to be helping us on this case, are they going to do the background check the same way we have the additions and the chaperones, even if they are outside of the, of the schools and even when, because they are, they are with our children? So what are we going to do with, in that case, if we have volunteers at front of the bus stops?
So that's a great question. Actually, what we're referring to is what parents normally do, they're walking their kid to the bus stop if you are out there with your child. And I understand some bus stops may not have any parents that are standing around, watching until the bus shows up, but that particular bullet is talking about parents who are normally engaged at the bus stop, because they walk their kid to the bus stop, or they drop them at the bus stop, they watch until the bus comes. That's what we're referring to there. Whether or not we could solicit addition volunteers who would be willing to stand at the bus stop until the students come is sort of a sticky area. You just gave John a bit of a palpitation, so, because our supervision at the bus stop is going to be of concern. Mr. Palmerini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Normally, under the laws of Florida, we don't have responsibility for supervision at a bus stop, that is, so like if two kids get in a fight at a bus stop prior to our bus getting there, that is something that we are not held liable for. You start assigning volunteers to monitor that, then we become responsible for that on the liability aspect. So, yeah, that is something to consider when making that decision. We would assume liability that we otherwise don't have.
Okay, so how are we going to, to support or to not support the person that wants to be a volunteer at the bus stop then? Because even, even in the, in high school bus stops, in middle school bus stops, we're going to need somebody. We don't have the, you know, the right measurements, you know, the guidelines, following the distance, the mask. How can we deal with that?
And I don't think there are any easy answers there. Member Lopez, I can tell you what we were indicating in this presentation is that parents who typically are walking to the bus stop or hanging at the bus stop until they see their child's bus arrive, we would be hopeful that they would supervise their own children and try to keep that distance. I don't have a solution for how we enforce it in large numbers and assume that responsibility. It's one of the things we have to ask parents to be responsible for.
I was thinking about, we have certain stops that are not safe, and I'm thinking about people that can, you know, we cannot put our children in danger, our students.
You know, well, so I want to be clear, we don't provide the supervision at the bus stops currently, so I don't want anyone to think this is any different, but we could certainly, I'm just thinking on the spot, we could certainly, in some areas, ask if our law enforcement professionals would sort of make sure they're passing by those bus stops. We can, we can brainstorm around potential stops or drive-bys with law enforcement or our security folks, but I can tell you, we've got hundreds of bus stops, there's no way we can supervise them all.
Thank you.
And just one more issue on that. The placement of bus stops itself under state law is a planning-level decision that we get absolute immunity for, so we can't get sued regardless, regarding where we place our bus stops. That's a planning-level decision.
Perfect. Thank you. I also have a question, a comment on page 80, a question. With the risk reduction information, can we have that information in different languages, in different social media, and also in mini-videos, and, you know, in a real situation? Because sometimes it's more appealing for our students to see the video, people like them, you know, students in the class on what to do, what not to do, something creative, so, I don't know, they can memorize what they should do. And in page 85?
Member Lopez, we do have plans for that.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. And the last one is on page 85. The parent training and support, how is going to look like?
So we would look to offer that both face-to-face and provide online options for families. Staff is reviewing distance learning and some of, not some, we had quite a bit of feedback from parents, and some of it just dealt with understanding the technology, also being mindful that we had two-thirds of our elementary students who had not transitioned into Launch Ed, one was getting ready, and so we would provide all of the training that goes with the launch of a cohort for Cohort Seven and Eight. for Cohort 7 and 8. And we would also have, uh, those available, uh, for them to view or review. Uh, in addition, we had the, uh, virtual office hours where, and the names and the contacts of individuals, uh, that if there was a question, we primarily had staff take advantage of that. We're also planning on having something similar to that for parents if they need to reach out for any type of, um, technical, uh, issue, or we already have it in place for SEL, for Social Emotional.
Perfect. Are we going to have that in different languages as well or not?
We will look at the, the paper or, um, the documents are very easy to translate. Uh, the trainings, we can look at translating as well. I'll make note of that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member, Member Lopez. Let's go to Member Castor Dental.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my, my questions are a compilation of different topics, so bear with me. I have a question about the re-survey of parents. And you may have already thought about this, but I just want to make sure that I'm sharing my thoughts. Um, if we could please have a different format of the survey, um, instead of the Connected, um, maybe do a Survey Monkey or something that is simple for everyone to use at, and that we can, um, maybe use some dropdown menu items to give some more information. I know that parents, um, it would be helpful if we knew what their concerns were, uh, their preference for the instructional model, maybe even rank order their preferences. And then, of course, include the school and the student grade level in, in those. It might help us to plan. And also, if we can include what their need is for transportation. I know we know what kids use the buses, but maybe we, we can push their, the idea of, if they could walk, would they? If they had someone with them, like a walking school bus? Or are they able to find a carpool to help us with that? And then for teachers on their survey, if they could also rank order their preferences for which model? And, sorry, my writing. Um, and also possibly include what, what teachers believe their training needs are now that they know what our options are. Second issue is about masks. And if, not if students are taking them on or off during the school day, but what if a parent says, "My child will come to school and my child will not wear a mask?" I see Mr. Paul Marini is about to answer.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Member Castor Dental, um, the regulations of health, safety and welfare are amongst the widest powers that you all as a local government have. Um, the United States Supreme Court just actually talked about health, safety and welfare regulations in the midst of this pandemic. It was a case called South Bay United Pentecostal versus Newsom, and it was limiting the number of people in a church for a service because of health concerns. And the court said, "The precise question of when restrictions on particular social activities should be lifted during a pandemic is a dynamic, in fact, intensive matter subject to reasonable disagreement. Our Constitution principally entrusts the safety and health of the people to the politically accountable officials of the state to guard and protect." So they give you all wide variety, uh, to regulate, um, health, safety and welfare. It's my opinion that if somebody says, "My child's coming to school," and you, they're not going to wear a mask, I think we can say, "No, for you all to come, for you to come to school in order to protect the health, safety and welfare, not only of that child, but of the other children and the adults in the room, that we're going to require you to wear a mask. And if you don't want to do that, we have other options available if the innovations option, uh, is approved by the state or the virtual option is approved." I think we can say that to a student and their parent.
All right, thank you. I would like to submit that we say that. Um, another question is about substitutes. And I don't know if, uh, we've been in contact with Kelly Services, and I'm sure someone has, but, um, I don't know if those substitutes are also trained in the protocols for each school where they may be needed? Um, and if we have enough to cover when a, a teacher is, uh, quarantined or has to leave? Because I know it was a, it was a problem in the past, making sure that we had adequate substitutes. Can you respond to that?
Yes, we have been in conversation, consultation with Kelly Services. In fact, you might recall, uh, they provided, um, all of the substitutes that we needed to help run our Grab and Go program, uh, for our students, uh, over the summer. Uh, also some additional support as needed. They've done temperature screenings for us in, uh, our first trials. And so Kelly Services is a fairly reliable partner. The training that will be necessary for them has been discussed as well. Not all completed, but certainly in those discussions.
All right, thank you. Yeah, they would need to have that, the Swivel training and all that. Okay. That's a lot. Thank you. And safety, yeah. Um, another question is, uh, I didn't hear enough information to satisfy parents, at least, of what is the difference between Orange County Virtual and Florida Virtual?
So it's on a couple of this, no, no. Orange County Virtual versus Launch Ed is on a slide. Orange County Virtual is a franchise of Florida Virtual, as Greg is probably approaching. Keep in mind, Florida Virtual hires, um, is a, is a statewide, some people called it the 68th District. Um, they are a statewide and hire their teachers from a larger geographic pool. Orange County Virtual is basically more of our local contingency and run by Orange County Public Schools. It keeps the resources, uh, and the teachers and the dollars here locally. Uh, and actually, Mr. Moody is at the table now. I'll let him further delineate.
Yes, ma'am. Good question. So Dr. Jenkins pretty much summed it all up. The, the, um, the similarity is we use, since we are a franchise of Florida Virtual, we actually use their, their learning management system, their LMS for their, and we use their content and courses. So that's about the only thing that, that was left out.
Okay, so they're virtually, pardon the pun, the same. Um, as far as what a student might experience, they log in, they, they operate similarly, they find out what the content is, the lessons are kind of structured the same. It doesn't look much different. Is that right?
That would be correct. I would say the, one of the, some of the differences, as Dr. Jenkins pointed out, would be, um, we have Orange County teachers teaching. Traditionally, prior to COVID, uh, Orange County Virtual has a, has an actual campus off of Silver Star Road where we are able to provide additional support and work sessions for, for students to come in on campus, to, uh, to have work sessions, to have consultations with teachers, uh, to have parent, teacher and student conferences, uh, and to have additional support provided, um, on campus. So we'll have to look at that, what that may look like, uh, with COVID and, and some of the restrictions related to, uh, social distancing. But I would expect us to work through that, uh, those questions about what would that, uh, face to face and unique support that Orange County Virtual provides that, uh, another provider may not be able to, to do.
Right, I can, I can see the benefit. I, my, my kids have also enrolled in Orange County Virtual and Florida Virtual. And if I can make one recommendation, um, first, the benefit of Florida Virtual for us was that it had a Flex option, which allowed, um, my students, my kids, to kind of work at their own pace, longer or shorter than a semester. Same content, but at their, really at their own pace. And if Orange County Virtual could offer that Flex schedule, uh, we would have gone with Orange County Virtual. So that might be an option to add to Orange County Virtual so that you're not losing students to Florida Virtual unnecessarily.
Yes, ma'am.
Just an idea, if you're able to.
Was, was that, uh, home ed Flex?
It was full-time Flex.
Full-time Flex.
With Florida Virtual, which interestingly, my, my kids ended up taking an Orange County Virtual taught class through Flex. I don't know how it all works behind the scenes, but that's something you could look into. I'm sure the principal, um, is very familiar with that. Uh, I have another question. Sorry. It has to do with the, the commissioner's order that we have to offer five days a week in person, but it doesn't sound like offering a hybrid model is excluded. Is it possible to offer a fourth option?
So logistically, I don't know that we could weather that. What you'd be saying, the reason we would have wanted to look at, uh, a hybrid A-Day, B-Day, so that you're splitting your population in half, is because that's a way that you can manage the population. Well, if the rule says, "I have to offer everybody five days face to face, and then I also try to offer this A-Day, B-Day," logistically, I'm creating quite a mess because I can't insist that parents choose A or B. So I have no way of knowing who wants to have five days face to face. Someone said, "If my child's going to be exposed two days, then why not expose them five days? And I've got a job and I have this issue." All of those things would enter in, but logistically, for the principal to try to manage going and coming, A-Day, B-Day, plus those who are supposed to be there five days, plus those who are going to be doing the Launch Ed, logistically, it would be nightmarish. Um, I don't know that we can manage it, nor that we would be able to financially plan for it if I have to offer five days face to face for everyone. It, it's messy. It's complicated.
I, I understand that it's messy and complicated, but I also see the value in, um, the classes offering, the, the met, the, the format that you are putting together for the A-Day and B-Day schedule. It's still socially distances and it allows, uh, the right class size.
It doesn't if you have to still have five days offered face to face.
That would be another model within the school.
No, no, no. Oh, you can't just offer A-Day, B-Day. You have to offer five days face to face for everyone, no matter what. That one won't go away.
That could still be an offering, is what I'm saying. It, I think it's a semantics thing, that they're offered four choices instead of three.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't think it's feasible, but I don't know that we're communicating clearly. I'll talk to you. Maybe it's just getting late.
Okay. Another topic that I don't, I didn't hear addressed, um, but it's been a long day, so it could have been. Um, eating in the classroom. That has been brought up, uh, as a concern by a lot of teachers when you're trying to maintain a, a, um, reduce the spread the whole day, and then you're allowing them to eat in the classroom. There's a, a lot of teachers are having a problem with that. And maybe, uh, an op, uh, a solution would be to allow the cafeteria monitors who are normally in the cafeteria when the kids are eating, just to take them outside, space them out, picnic style, and then they're not bringing it back into the classroom with their, while they're eating. Just an option.
Happy, happy to look at it. There are issues with that as well. First issue is personnel. You do not have enough, um, cafeteria workers. I also think that there'd be an issue with, um, the contract because that's not part of their normal duty, so we would have to impact bargain. I have not heard, um, that it spreads. I've heard concerns that teachers would not have their planning time, but everything that we've heard, including from Dr. Pino, is that less movement is what they encourage. Um, and so at the elementary level, many schools, that's the option that they're using for Lunch, is that instead of having children traveling back and forth, you're keeping them in the classroom. But I'll certainly, um, research as, you know, information changes daily.
Okay. My final, um, comment, uh, has to do with where parents and teachers can get more information or ask questions. And it is apparent to me that the parents and teachers in my district know how to get ahold of me and all of us. I know we all had so many emails and phone calls and Facebook messages, but, um, I want to just continue to allow anybody who needs to get in touch with me about a question or an idea to continue reaching out. That, that's fine. It, I learned a lot throughout that process, so thank you.
Thank you, Member Castor Dental. Um, let's go to Member Gallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Member Castor Dental, because you, you asked several of the questions that I was going to ask, so I, I appreciate that. Um, just to echo the last sentiment from Member Castor Dental, um, I, I agree transparency is so important, and I've received messages this evening from parents saying, um, and staff and teachers, um, thanking us for this very long work session and asking us to please keep it up and, and to please continue to be transparent, um, because they just, it's scary. We've all received hundreds of emails, and I haven't been able to read every one of them. Um, I'm still working on it. It's just very hard to keep up with, but the ones that I have, and I have read many, I can sense how scared our teachers are. I can sense how scared our parents are. I mean, they're truly frightened. We're living in very frightening times. And so, you know, when we go back to, to talk about flexibility and compassion and grace, I mean, we really have to operate under those guidelines and make sure that we're being as flexible as possible and we're, we're considering all scenarios. And we are offering grace, because I think that that's most important, um, during this time. And I'll echo, uh, Member Castor Dental, please continue to email me. I'm learning a lot. It's important for us as a board to understand what your fears are, um, what your ideas are, what you can and can't live with. I've received many emails from teachers that said, "If I have to go back to the classroom, I can't go back." Um, so I am extremely concerned about the teacher shortage and our ability to get subs in a classroom. So along those lines, will we be flexible? Will we be looking at ulterior, um, solutions for, for teachers that want to stay home with their kids because they don't want to send their kids back to school? They can teach their class from home, but they necessarily can't teach it from a classroom setting. Will we look into those scenarios so we don't lose good teachers? We continue to educate our kids? Um, and we're being as flexible as, as we possibly can?
We will look at every possible scenario. Keep in mind, we have been constrained by that latest order, but certainly happy to look at every potential scenario.
Thank you. And then I, um, I have a question about, um, the clinics. If, if a child is present with symptoms, a fever, cough, whatever, um, will they all be isolated together? I got a, an email from a parent that was concerned that their child who may have strep, which is contagious, might be in an area with a child that may or may not have COVID, and then they might be more susceptible to that. So how are we going to isolate all students separate from one another?
They would still be distanced in, uh, the clinic area. Both are contagious, as you mentioned, so they would need to be distanced and they would have face masks on.
Thank you. And then, um, I'm trying to read my writing. Give me a second. Oh, I, um, would it be possible for those teachers who desire it to make, um, as much as the training possible online prior, the professional development training possible, um, online prior to pre-planning? Um, and then there was a question about Canvas, if we will still be using it? And if, and if not, will we be training on it?
So we did offer, um, uh, online training and paid, um, and to pay the teachers during, uh, the month of June. Certainly we can look, um, at the dollars that are available to see if we can extend that into July. Currently, we have all of the trainings that were available during our pivot are still available, um, on, on Launch Ed. are still available on Launch Ed through Canvas. And we will continue to use Canvas. That has been a very effective platform for us. And again, we have cohort training for teachers in Cohort 7 and 8 that was also offered this summer. We also extended it to any new teachers who may have been new to a school that arrived after their cohort had the training. So, we will continue to provide and post all of the virtual learnings, and we're phasing in the face-to-face. We've had a few face-to-face trainings. And as you mentioned, teachers are very apprehensive about coming in. We've had a few for our preparing new principals. And so, we'll continue to offer both, but we know that currently, the online option is much more attractive.
Thank you. And then I'm assuming the Launch Ed, like for our IB students, if they choose to stay home and use Launch Ed, that will be kind of seamless? They'll be allowed to do so?
Through Launch Ed at home, yes. And I do have a response. Virtual does not offer Cambridge, but they do offer the dual enrollment, and they do offer the advanced placement. I'm sorry? Oh, and Greg, did you want to?
Yes, ma'am, if I could. Castor-Dental, you asked about Florida Virtual Flex. I just want to, and I made a comment that I just want to make sure that the general public is aware. We too, Orange County Virtual, also allow students flexibility in finishing a course. So, if I, like, for example, my child took a course during the summer and was able to finish it in a couple of weeks, one of the courses. But also, a course may take more, a semester course may take more than a semester. So, we may have students taking a U.S. government class, that's a semester class, into the spring, when they started in August. Now, what we do is, and part of what I think is our benefit, is we will coach students and parents, and we will monitor students' engagement and the content within the modules to make sure that they are staying, because within the modules is a kind of a timeline. In October, you should be here in the module, right? So, if we see a student falling behind, we will absolutely engage with that parent and that student about, "You need to catch up. You need to catch up." But also, offering that support. So, I may have said something, may have misconstrued, but we also, like Florida Virtual, have flexibility on start and finish of a course.
Member Gallo?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And my last final thought, I've got a question and a final thought. We're getting a lot of emails about, like, "Meet the Teachers" and "Curriculum Nights." Obviously, those are going to look far different than what they have in the past, but if there's a way to do, like, "Meet the Teacher" virtually, especially at the beginning, I am a proponent of looking at a later start date if possible. I know that the South Florida is in different phases that we are in Orange County, so they will be allowed to start later than what we will be able to do. And I know that Superintendent Runcie has come out and basically said that that they locally will be making the decisions. The state won't. And I believe Superintendent Dunn in Miami has echoed some of the sentiments. And so, I understand that they're in different phases. So, when we look at putting together frequently asked questions, when we look at addressing some of these issues, if we could just make it very clear why we are starting when we are. And if there is room, and we are, if we can bargain or look at it, I would definitely support moving that start date so that we could be more prepared, as long as it's not an undue burden on parents who are expecting us to go back on the 10th. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go then to Member, Dr. Gordon. Dr. Gordon?
Going back, because I'm still getting questions in reference to the transportation. So, I'm going to ask again if, everybody doesn't have internet connection, but I wish that the transportation information center, majority of our students aren't transported when we go back to brick and mortar. So, I really, they're asking back and forth, and I'm reading all the pages again, and all the answers are there. So, even though we have maintained the 4,658, they seem to be hanging in there, but I think they're gathered together somewhere in groups, and they have these concerns. But those questions that they're asking, a lot of them have been answered some kind of way, and they have to have taken a break and go somewhere. But they are concerned about those students. And I did explain that we did have social distancing on the bus. And Dr. Dickens did an excellent job when we first threw this out and had that long discussion previously, before the pandemic really got out of hand, about the temperature check and the signing receipts. So, I know that's a major concern right now, of people not wanting to spread and not wanting to catch. But those were not my questions. My questions are these. It's the financial implications. And I'm very, very concerned, and I think you've heard me say this before, namely, the, a couple of board members, probably Ms. Colbert and Mrs. Pam Gu. I'm very concerned, and I mentioned this to the superintendent, and I'm saying it for the record, because evidently, it's falling on deaf ears. Our minority, okay, and women business enterprise. I know that they do a great job, but I'm concerned. I've been getting a lot of calls from minorities and women wanting to get thought about procurement. I do remember asking Mr. Morris, I know that he had put up, "We used to have a lot of stuff on the website. There is so much on there now on the front page. I don't know how anybody can find a job if they have a small business." I am concerned about our minority and women business enterprise and our small business with minorities. We used to call them in.
Pam School has left the meeting.
Okay. We used to call them in and help train them, so they will know how our procurement process is handled. Several called me the other day, and I referred them in, because I didn't know them. And I asked them not to call me again, because I tried to stay out of procurement issues. I don't even know the architects by name. I really don't. I didn't know the company. I don't try to get to know anybody. About that built schools and do anything for us. I thank them. I'm very speechy to them. I wouldn't recognize them if I saw them in the street, and they probably wouldn't recognize me. I'm saying all that to say this. I'm concerned about it, about small businesses getting a piece of the prize. I find that the financial implications, we approved at our last board meeting, or either the board meeting before that, the personal protective equipment, the PPE, of over 1.1 million. There were several people that had called in. I called for service and told them to be on standby. People from other areas were complaining about companies we were hiring. They were not companies of diversity, and they were just hiring people so that they could get the contract. I really do not want us to fall back after we have gone through the DSA audit. I don't want us to fall back into the vultures of hiring and giving contracts to all white businesses when they don't have any minorities. We used to even ask them to bring in their staff. There's a lot of money out there. We just stopped talking between the financial implications and the CARE Act, over 101.9 million dollars that's in here. Some of it, we have already approved to spend, but I'm very concerned about diversity. I'm very concerned about the procurement procedures. And one company, I went, oh, I did what the people asked me to do. I did what the whistleblower at that time asked me to do. And lo and behold, it was pretty much like they said. And it wasn't just a disgruntled, you could see how that company set up their website to make you think. But I think we ought to do our due diligence, especially now when these small businesses are closing and hurting. You must remember, these are our parents. And after a while, the teachers, we're going to all be there. They just texted me a minute ago and said they're clients. But the main thing is, we have got to be there, the small businesses. All the big businesses can't get this 100 million dollars. And I know it's going in regression and reserve and shortfall and all that stuff, but I see where we are headed back down, the same line. We're not paying attention to diversity in our procurement purchasing. And if I'm wrong, please bring it to me. And I would more than like to show you a whistleblower that has asked us to these companies that force you away with millions. We're spending a million on cameras. I do hope that there is a small business in there somewhere. We're spending 70,000 on sprayers. I pray that there is a minority women business enterprise in there. I pray that you have worked very closely with our MWBEs to see if we have qualified people. And in the midst of this pandemic, and people are losing their business, I hope that OCPS staff are training our parents that may have these small businesses and don't know how to run with the big dogs. We are buying shields, 5.3 million dollars in shields. Lord, but I haven't seen that one. The only one I've seen so far is the PPE. And I did my due diligence on that, and I'm very disappointed. And I expressed that, but it was already going through, and I know how the urgency is. We have got to keep our eyes open for this. Somebody's making a move. And we don't know why all this is coming up, and why so many things are being demanded. I know that people are saying, "Get this drug, get that drug, get this." And people have walked this way, and we don't know what this is in our children. And the reason why I'm saying all that, all of a sudden, this money shows up, that yet money couldn't show up in the nation for salaries. Now, the governor did let some money show up for a beginning teacher, but he didn't say anything about the stupid third year, or fourth year, or fifth, or whatever in the middle, and let alone the top of the salary scale, you know? So, I got a problem with this. And I know I heard Dr. Jenkins talk about the shortfall and what we need to do, that we need to sit down at the board and see what we are calling a shortfall. What is the shortfall? Because when these people lose their jobs, the small businesses have already lost their jobs. So, we don't know. The education field will be next. If we don't plan this out correctly, the educational field, NEA already wrote it out, about how many millions of teachers will be losing their jobs this year, from the state of Florida all the way out to California. So, I think we need to look at the statistics of where we are going. Nobody's making it lucrative to come in and teach. Teachers are being told to do duck and duck. They want everything taken care of by the teachers. We have to clean up, mop up, pop up, cook, make sure. And then now, they're asking us possibly to just stay in the classroom all day. There was a time when we did that. There was a time when we did that. I could remember, but my concern right now is this 101.9, I may be off, by a couple of thousand. But I'm concerned. I think the board needs to look into where it's going, look at the company. We can't tell you what company to get. But we can definitely tell you to follow our policies and look out for diversity. And I see we are following right back in. If we found cameras from this particular company, sprayers from this particular company, then I don't know what kind of bid was put up there, and I don't know how many how many minorities, or small businesses have applied. But we really need to reevaluate that, and I wanted to make that point and make that very clear. So, I would like more on the CARE Act with the 7.9 million with the devices and where they are going, those eight cohort devices, and then the regression intervention, the 2.4 million. I'm concerned about what is the regression, who is regressing, how far down are we regressing, and then the reserve. So, that's 38.4 million in the reserve. So, I mean, I know what's happening, but this just amazes me. And I've been on this board 20 years, and I keep hearing the reserve. And we've asked for so much. I don't know how you are going to be able to answer anymore. I wish you well. God knows I do. And I'll probably be trying to back you or whatever you ask for in the future, but I know other people are going to be asking too. But I do know that your main group is being overlooked. Your small businesses are being overlooked. Your MWBEs are being overlooked. Your whole workforce is being overlooked, from administration all the way down, all the way down to your power profession. We're being overlooked, and now you give us 80 pages, what is it, 80 pages, for us to make a difference? And then we sit up here and talk about regression and shortfalls and what you are requiring of the workforce to do? I heard Biden put it very well. It's good to call everybody essential, and that we may be needed, but it's good too that we have to look after the mental health and social and emotional well-being of our workforce. And our workforce that will be working with the parents, children. I will go to the top, the administration, your professional people in the middle that help and feel bad, see back down, your instructional and non-instructional staff. I put it like that. Now, all this money coming in, going out to these doggone vendors, millions of dollars. That's probably mad with the architects when they walk in. You're going to come in, get anywhere from 30 to 58 million, or 60 to 100 million, and then you walk in with one plan, not in my district. How you going to come in with one plan and tell us what you going to do? Now, we're paying them. So, I would like to see diversity. I would like to see the MWBEs. They used to be very vocal. I'm not no reflection, because I know the person that runs it very well, but I just haven't heard from the minority of women business enterprise. The women used to come before the board. The small businesses are begging, and I don't know who's listening. But if you all could bring me a list of small businesses that we are working with in this area that can help us get the cameras and the sprayers and the shields, I bet, just like our students use those 3D machines, I bet they can create and come up with something ourselves. So, I don't know. I'm just a little disturbed about the financial implication and where it's going and how it's being used. You know, nothing here And I, you know, nothing here is salary and, um, for people that your workforce. What, what, what is appreciation for your workforce? We didn't even get to do Appreciation Day in May, like we always do. So that's my plea, and I rest it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gold. Vice Chair Gold, are you still with us?
Thank you. I am, I am. I had to get off of mute. Sorry. Um, I, this is a question for Mr. Kelly and the financial slide. In the 38.4 million dollars, was the adjustment to our local one millage also included in that?
No, that is strictly the federal grant that's coming, coming to our district. That's part of the 90% entitlement dollars that comes to us as part of the CARES Act that flows through the state. It has nothing to do with the, we'll say, the overall challenges in our operating budget for this year. That's just really focused on how we're planning to use the CARES Act dollars in the district.
Right, but you were saying that you thought we should keep, wasn't that the amount you wanted to keep for the rainy day fund in case of the shortfalls based on projections? So those projections, did they include our local one mil?
No, those projections are really looking at the FEFP dollars that are coming from the state, which is both state resources as well as your normal RLE, local millage. It would not include the special millage, no. As far as the...
Okay. So a follow-up to that, I know in previous board meetings, we, and when we were talking about the budget, we were talking about what might happen with flexibility in the reserves. Have we gotten any indication on how far we can legally dip into reserves, if so required to, in the next 24 months?
There was questions that were posed to Tallahassee from the Finance Officers Group with regard to whether there would be any relief from the requirements within statute. And they indicated there would not be any relief. So we have to continue to comply with statutes relative to our, our fund balances that are assigned and unassigned.
Wow, this is such a rock and a hard place. Because on the one hand, we're, we're faced with mandatorily going back to school with the face of the pandemic. And if we don't, we dramatically affect our own income stream and revenue because it will reduce sales tax, it will reduce our one mil. And we already know, based on the projections from statewide, and they're still early, if there's going to be a reduction in the state revenues, even though they don't want to announce it till after the, the election. There's just no way around it. So it, it really is a very tough thing that we're doing. And, and, you know, again, safety and security is always first and foremost. But there's safety and security on both sides of this healthcare issue for our families and for the well-being of our students so that they can thrive instead of just survive and have poor curriculum. Um, I, I, switching subjects a little bit, um, we, will we rely on the county to notify families if we have someone suspected of COVID? Or will we participate in that contract case, uh, tracing and notify the class or the, the school, depending on the situation and the guidance from the county? How, how do we see that communication going out to families? And, and before you answer, the reason why I ask is, we have a lot of fear out there right now. And the trust that we build will be very, very important that we let people know in a timely manner that they or their students were exposed.
Dr. Jenkins?
So there will be a process in place. There's a process in place currently. The county health department takes the lead, but we consult with them and work together around notification and who needs to be notified. Contact tracing essentially is directed by county health department. Dr. Pino?
Right. And in follow-up to that, I think constant communication and reinforcement is going to be important. And Dr. Pino is very trusted across the county. And perhaps he would offer, you know, a daily message or a weekly blog, especially for our families and our staff and our volunteers, um, that, that could just keep that communication open and, and help to build that confidence that we are absolutely on top of this in any way humanly possible. Because I think that's going to be really key, is the transparency and that, that open line of communication. Um, have we, do we have a plan for training our partners and ed and our volunteers and additions and all the extra people that really help our students to succeed? Because they are an extension of our workforce, even though they're not paid.
So, yeah, we have annual training for those groups already. We will certainly add anything regarding the pandemic to their training as well.
Okay. And have we talked, I know we've been talking to our healthcare partners who have been, you know, wanting to support us in whatever way that they can. But have we talked to the partners at large and really opened up to our community to say, you know, we need things like PPE? And can we get some of the county PPE that they have been able to get? Uh, and, and maybe have that donated and, and build some of those separators that we might want on the buses and in these other locations? So that we can squirrel away as much of those dollars as we can and also really engage our community in a meaningful way, directed. I think we should design everything. But if we put plans out there, it's amazing what people will do, just like we've seen with the CDC mask template. They, that's on wildfire across the country. So, um, how are we leveraging our community to support us?
Our community has been extremely supportive. The county has given us some of their PPE. We've gotten resources from both philanthropic and government entities, and we'll continue to leverage that. In fact, we had several of our partners and supporters reach out to us to ask how they could help. And that is how we got so many of the hotspots provided for our families who would not otherwise have had internet connectivity. And so we are leveraging that. And county government and others have been helpful to us as well. We will continue to do so.
Okay, that, that completes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Bird?
Thank you, Chair. First, I just want to say, commend our staff that is still sitting out here in the audience. I feel so bad for you guys in Arabia back there. Hi, honey. I didn't even get to say hello to you. Wow, you guys are awesome. So, um, okay, I'm going to try to just run through these quicks. I don't need answers for everything, but some things I just want to put out there so we can think about it. The swivel technology, um, for the, in the launch ed in classrooms, will that have a separate mic or will it rely on computer microphones and in the classroom from the teacher? And will it, do we know if that will pick up voices behind a mask?
So, um, it's a two-part question. The marker that you wear around your neck does pick up audio which transmits to the iPad through the app. But in addition to that, we recently put out a memo to schools explaining how the audio enhancement that we already put into classrooms as a part of the launch ed program will adequately amplify the voice of a teacher in a classroom when they're wearing a mask. In addition to that, that audio enhancement can also transmit that sound because it's through the whole room like this. It would pick up on a recording, so both are true.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I have a question about pre-K VE classes. We have several, and I know I have several in my district. So I'm wondering how those will look or if, if they're going to be provided these same options? Or will they have to mostly be face-to-face? Or what are your thoughts on that?
So currently, we are looking at offering all options to a vast majority of our, our children. I suspect that those that have disabilities, especially those that are more severe, may opt to stay home just because of the health issues associated with that. Many of our pre-K programs, children are not as severe. And if parents are there to support, could benefit from the virtual or the launch ed at home. But that, that's an area to be perfectly transparent, that we are going to monitor very closely. And that we will probably tweak because we want to make sure that we're providing the best for them with all of the various services. And it's very unknown, not only because they're so little, but because they also then have the disability. But yes, we, we currently plan on offering it to all.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to kind of throw out my two cents on the temperature monitoring. I'm, I'm still not convinced that, I know, I mean, I agree with Dr. Pino. I don't think it's a great idea because I don't understand how we're going to get 1,000 high school students through the front door spaced out in a reasonable amount of time and check temperatures. I, I just don't know how that's going to happen. And I'm wondering, I know I had sent the superintendent some information on thermal imaging technology where they can, the camera can monitor all, large groups of people coming in at one time and check temperatures that way. Something like that might be more reasonable. I know there's a cost involved, of course, but I just, I don't see how that's going to work. And that's not something you have to really answer necessarily tonight. But, and the, I have another concern with the partitions that we, that you had brought up some pictures of for elementary. My thought on that is that's more surfaces that need to be cleaned, but that's just my opinion. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about, have we thought anything about, I think I heard you mention UV lights? And are we, are we addressing air filters, the replacement of air filters and air cleaning devices? And the reason I bring that up is because I got an article today that said that yesterday, a whole new group of research came out that goes against everything Dr. Pino said about those droplets not being aerosol. That now they're thinking, like 250 scientists sent a letter to the H, WHO saying that they think this is far more aerosol than they thought originally. So my question is, are we looking at replacing those air filters and air cleaning devices for the schools? And that's something we can just float out there and keep in mind. Um, I have a question about OCVS for teachers. If a teacher goes to OCVS, they still have all the benefits of a district teacher as far as union, okay, policies, everything? It's just like they're a classroom, a regular traditional school teacher?
Yes, ma'am. There's actually an appendix in the back of the contract that deals with the specific job requirements with respect to Orange County virtual teachers. But that's collectively negotiated with our unions. And so, yeah, but they still have all the benefits of being an Orange County public schools teacher.
Okay. Um, I'm going to skip that one. This is a question for you, John. What kind of liability do we face concerning COVID as far as illnesses, people contracting, or even worse, something more serious happening to somebody within our school system?
The liability question is going to be very interesting because what you're going to have to do is that it would be a wrongful death action. And you would have to prove that somebody certainly caught it in our facilities from somebody that's in our facilities and that we probably knew about it and didn't take proper medial action and it caused them to get sick. That's going to be a hard case to prove. I will never say any case is impossible to prove because weird stuff happens all the time in courts. But I would think it's going to be a harder case to prove in order to affect us with liability on that.
Okay, thank you. And did we cover, I don't know if this was covered or not, it's been a long time, but workman's comp? Did you, did you talk about that? If it's, if a teacher gets COVID while they're teaching? I think we did cover this. I'm sorry. I might have missed it.
You know, what I know about workman's comp is enough to make me very dangerous in this form, so I would like to look that up.
Okay.
And get you an answer that would be complete and talk to some of our comp folks rather than give you that answer.
Okay, that's fine. I wanted to kind of clarify the hybrid idea that I think a couple of my board members have brought up about offering a fourth option. And I'm thinking, in addition to offering the full five-day option, which we're required to do, could we not offer a hybrid launch ed? Where I'm thinking to help with those high school electives and the middle schools that it might be more difficult, maybe they could take their core classes in the morning at school and then go home to do virtual elective classes? Is that something we could look at offering?
We can.
Yeah, Member Bird, they can do that now.
Through OCVS? Okay, but it's not something we can do through the launch ed necessarily?
I don't think so. Happy to look into it. I don't think so.
Okay.
And, and I, and I also want to check with my state contacts because what I don't want to do is submit a plan that then gets turned down. We, we know that the launch ed at home will pass the checklist. I don't want to turn in a plan that has launch ed at home plus another potential hybrid and plan gets turned down, we're back to square one. So let me check my resources as well.
Okay, sounds good. In the, I know that we talked about the CARE Act and having that reserve fund, I'm looking for Dale, having, keeping some of that money in reserves. And that makes total sense to me. But I also think that there is a need for a few things. And one of the things that I think we've kind of mentioned a little bit, but could we use some of that funding for hiring extra custodial staff? So that we could have more people on the ground at each school for cleaning? And the nurse situation, I think we kind of mentioned that a little bit earlier, having a nurse at every school. Is that something that we could maybe look at using some of that money? I know that it's important to save, but that's something that I still think that we should be looking at, if that's possible.
There may be some limitations on actually hiring personnel because those are supposed to be recurring costs unless you're just hiring them until this money runs out. So...
Which for the custodian teams could be, like a temporary job.
Oh, you're saying temporary, temp services?
Maybe, like a temp type.
Let's look at it.
Yeah. Um, I'm almost done, guys, I promise. Um, the substitute situation, I've had a lot of people email me about substitutes, concerns about, um, about, one concern is that Kelly Services substitutes travel from school to school, and that might not be great as far as contact tracing. So I'm thinking, could it be possible to possibly hire a additional staff member, like a para position at each school that could be kind of like a permanent sub? That would know the, how to use the launch ed and could go into a class if a teacher needs to leave halfway through the day so we don't have to split up kids? Which I don't even think we could split up kids at this point, but, you know, something like that. Could we look at that?
Happy to look at that. Let me refresh your memory. Those who were around back when we went with Kelly Services, the issue was a single sub in a school does not help your absentee rate because the chances of only having one absence in a school per day is not likely. And so back when we had permanent subs, our vacancy rate, our fill rate for absent teachers was around 80%. Because you can't, only having one, unless you move them from school to school to help cover vacancies. from school to school to help cover vacancies. Having one at a school means that they do something else in the front office because nobody's absent, or they cover one classroom and there are several absences. It was not efficient. That's why we ended up going with the temp service because they could fill, they can grow and expand based on our needs at every school. Certainly happy to take a look at it again. It's an additional cost that just may not be available in the budget, but logistically, the numbers are what drove us to Kelly Services because a single body on a 200-member staff at a high school, a single individual is not going to have, make a dent in their absentee needs. But happy to take a look at it again.
Okay. And, and I think mainly it's just trying to wrap my head around how a substitute is going to learn how to use the whole Launch Ed system and be able to do that effectively with kids at home.
Well, I can tell you Kelly's pretty committed to putting their folks through training, and, and a large number of their substitutes actually are degreed, and some of them are former teachers. And so they, they have a pretty hefty capacity. Doesn't mean that they can do it without fail. I think their capacity would be larger than one per school, 200 essentially, but one assigned per school for covering vacancies at a high school alone. We know that wouldn't be sufficient. But Dr. Williams has been in touch with Kelly. They are eager to please. We will certainly work closely with them and see which one works out better for us financially and logistically.
And do we have a plan in place if a teacher has to leave halfway through a day with what, like unexpectedly, what we would do with the class?
So, yeah, that's, that's an old strategy where we used to have to split the class in an emergency. But chances are, on a typical campus, there's a CRT, there's a resource teacher, there's someone else who can be called upon to go in and cover that class. They need to go in with their face mask on, as anyone else would, but there's usually another adult, even an AP if we needed to, to cover in an emergency.
Okay, thank you. As far as the survey, or I don't think you called it a survey, you called it intention of registration, maybe, for parents, can we be sure that we make it very clear, or that we outline everything for face-to-face that would be expected? And that would, that would entail as far as, you know, eating classroom, eating lunch in the classroom, maybe restricted recess, map face masks, of course, maybe no switching classes, all those things? Because some of those things, I think, might be deal breakers for some parents, and they might choose virtual instead. But I think we just need to be really clear about that when we give them their choices of what that would entail. The other thing I wanted to ask is about specials in elementary school. I haven't heard that mentioned today. I know we talked about chorus, like in high school, but how are we thinking the specials in elementary are going to work?
So actually, specials in elementary is a little bit easier than at the secondary level because, again, you would be able to keep a class together and then have the teacher travel to the classroom with that group and not have the children move about. So our, our angst is at the secondary level because the transition is inevitable and the scheduling is much more difficult.
I'm going to test someone's memory again. This is not new. It used to be that the music teacher, if a school was packed pretty full, they traveled with a cart, or the art teacher traveled with a cart, or the un poquito de español teacher went from room to room. And so we're not unaccustomed to having, to having, I know that was pretty bad. But, but we are accustomed to having the resource teachers come to the classroom. The guidance counselor comes in and does a lesson. We've been accustomed to that at elementary. It's much easier to manage there.
Okay. I know we have devices going to our elementary. Can we make sure that our high schools, I'm thinking ones that have older devices, I know our schools deal with a lot of broken devices or devices don't work. I hear about it a lot. So can we be assured that we will have a good supply? And I say that because one of my high schools told me that at the end of the year, that, not even at the end of the year, in sometime in the spring, they were short on devices. Like, some kids didn't even get a device when they had a broken device because they didn't have any available. So can we be assured that that's going to be addressed?
So I want to, so I appreciate that question, Member Bird. I want to mention that when students take the devices, the parents have to sign a form. It says if you break it, if you damage it, you're supposed to pay a fee. And in some instances, when that is not done, then there may be an issue, or if there's absolute negligence on the part of the student. Now, if we were in class in those instances, we would say, here's your laptop to use while you're here in class. You don't get to take it home until you pay for the one that you damaged. Now that we're not in class, we have to have some provision, for those who are not in class, we would have to have some provision. But those are tax dollars that the community has invested in our young people, and we will need some accountability for the devices as well. Every intention is to make sure students have the resources that they need while they're on campus or during their instructional time. The high schoolers and the middle schoolers that we let take those devices back and forth are supposed to have some commitment and some requirement should something happen to the device. And so we will certainly watch our breakage levels, have every intention of having some renewal cycles to come through in years to come. Also, there's a possibility that the high schoolers might keep the newest laptops, and those that are a little bit more dated can be used by the younger students because they don't need as much memory. All of that's being worked on, but we have to, we will stress over and over again, this community has invested in our children, and they have got to help us take care of those devices or pay the fines when they are required when something has happened to them. Now, does that mean everyone who didn't get their computer replaced hadn't paid for the repair? I can't tell you that for certain. If all of the requirements are in place, they should have gotten a replacement.
Okay. I just wanted to add my two cents about Florida Virtual versus Orange County Virtual because I've had experience with both with my daughter. And we have found that she has taken, the only reason she took courses through Florida Virtual was because they weren't offered with Orange County Virtual. So my question is, are we, I'm assuming that we will offer, there'll be more class offerings to Orange County Virtual?
Yes, we're already, we're already in conversations and getting the cost associated with adding more courses.
Okay. And then, almost done, I promise. I just want to, want, John, you to say one more time that, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty clear on it, but I'm still getting emails that we do not have a choice about not opening the schools, correct? And if we were trying to be valiant and fight against, against the government, if we decided not to open, what would be the repercussion of that? Just to make that clear for everyone listening.
Thank you for that, the entry into that subject matter because now I get to play the best angel of doom arguments out. The order is very clear to me that it says that we have to have brick and mortar schools open by August. If you all were to fail, that could mean anywhere between August 10 to August 31. That would constitute being in August. If you all were to fail to do that, if you said, I'm not doing that, we think it's, you know, we disagree with the order, then there is a provision in the Florida Constitution, Article 4, Section 7, I believe, that deals with removal of office of people, school board members. So there's an advisory opinion from the Florida Supreme Court in 1993, says that the governor can remove school board members for misfeasance and malfeasance. And misfeasance and malfeasance are defined terms, and, hold on, I'm flipping to that because I actually have them here.
The superintendent also has an obligation, even if the board tells her otherwise?
Yes, that is correct as well. Malfeasance refers to evil conduct or an illegal deed, the doing of that which one ought not to do, the performance of an act by an officer in his, this is from 1934, so it was his, his official capacity that is wholly illegal and wrongful, which he has no right to perform or which he has contracted not to do. Misfeasance is, refers to the performance by an officer in his official capacity of a legal act in an improper or illegal manner, while malfeasance is doing an official act in an unlawful manner. In my opinion, if you all don't open by August 31, that would be an illegal act, and it could potentially subject you to removal. Well, if the kids don't come, that's obviously, yeah, if kids don't come, you know, we're going to have to teach the kids that do show up. I mean, we're not going to have nobody showing up. So clearly, we will have a responsibility to educate those children. If those children do not come to either OCPS or face-to-face learning, you know, our Launch Ed model, our virtual model, if they haven't transferred somewhere else, then we might have responsibilities as far as truancy would go. We would have to ensure that, you know, we have a responsibility, ensure that children go to school as well. So to the extent they do not do that, then we would be responsible for initiating truancy procedures. Like I said, I'm the angel of death at this point.
I think it's as clear as it can be.
Yeah, it totally is. I just wanted to have that said one more time. And I just finally wanted to say that I, I can understand Dr. Gordon's concern about the procurement and the opportunities for our local community, just being good partners. I think that that's, I mean, I think it's a great idea anyway, but I think being good partners in this economic uncertainty for a lot of families, I think that that's a great, great thing to be aware of. And, you know, I know that Procurement Office offers the How to Do Business with OCPS seminar. I think they do it maybe every month or so, but maybe we could put that out there again and say, you know, encourage, with some kind of encouragement to our local families and local community to check out How to Do Business with OCPS. I don't know. Might be a good idea. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Member Cobert?
Okay, this is my final comment. And it is a plea to our community for partnership. Parents, you need to turn to your neighbors and help each other. You need to help each other with carpool so that we can lower the density on our buses. We need to take a serious look at our virtual options so that we can lower the density on our campuses. We need your help in creating a culture of health and safety. Teach your little ones about the safety protocols that are required at school and at home. We won't have to do this forever, but we need your help in teaching them now. And please support our teachers. They are our frontline workers. They're essential, and they need your support now more than ever. To our charitable partners who often do school supply drives, take a look, contact your individual schools. Some of those schools may need individual supplies for students so that they're not sharing common supplies. So ask your local schools, what is it that they need? And don't forget masks and other sanitary supplies, especially this year. To our business community, help us support our teachers, who we know now more than ever are essential to your businesses. And to our community as a whole, our parents, our teachers, our unions, and our district, may we all operate together with flexibility, compassion, grace, patience, and kindness. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Member Gould. Vice Chair Gould.
I had two things. One, and follow up to the thermometers. There is technology out there, and I forwarded that to the team a few weeks ago, and I can reforward it, or reforward it, I can't even put a sentence together anymore. Where they're almost very inexpensive thermometers that are taken home, but there's an app, and it aggregates it all. So gives you very early warning signs on multiple things, flus, cold spreads, and of course, COVID. So that may be a solution, especially in our lower grade, or maybe even in the more dense schools. The other thing we did not talk about tonight, and I know this is the start of the conversation, not the end, but is our CTE magnet and vocational training programs, some of which cannot be delivered well virtually, although we've had some very, very clever teachers, like the one from the Lakaiva culinary program. But overall, if you need to weld, you can't set that up at home and do it. How are we addressing that and to help these people who were interrupted complete their certification going into the new year? And if you can't answer that tonight, we can take that and maybe just make sure that that gets broadcast out, because I've had questions about that.
Thank you. That's what we'll do. Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. Let me, let me just close by thanking the superintendent, her team, everyone who has stayed with us here in the room this evening, the board for very thoughtful and deliberative discussion, and most especially the thousands of people who have, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people who have given us feedback and input, and the thousands of people that have tuned in tonight to, to be informed and to be better aware of the challenges that we face, the difficult situation this board is in, based on the order that we received yesterday. And to echo the words, I think, Member Cobert said it worse, sorry, said it best, that we need, as a community, to pull together, and we need to make the best and the smartest choices that we can for our children and collectively for our community. And I am confident that this community, as it always does, will rise to that occasion. So we will adjourn the meeting now. We will come back next week. We will make a decision as best as we can under the circumstances so that we can give some certainty to our parents as quickly as possible and our teachers. Good night. God bless. Stay well.